Today we begin a series called Stories of Valor here in Dare County and feel very privileged and honored to have Kevin Wallace and his wife Lauren Wright Wallace here with us today. They're doing really good work. Looking forward to talking to them and conveying to you the story of the van of Valor and just some great stories about the heritage of wartime service here, our Purple Heart recipients specifically, and the great heritage that we have here in Dare County. We've had a front row seat for every war this nation's ever fought. I'm looking so forward to talking to both of you a little bit about that. So, Kevin, let's start with you here. What's your background?
Military background or just in general?
Sure. Yeah, just, yeah, personal and military.
Well, I grew up in a town kind of similar to Manio on the west coast called Kayukas, small town, under 1,000 people. Every restaurant, every store is mom and pop, so which made Manio feel so familiar and home for me. So, growing up there surfing, fishing, kind of the same lifestyle I would have had had I grown up here. And I was preparing for a surf competition when I was young. I was probably about 12 or 13. And then I twisted my ankle, couldn't do it. So, my dad had an old Minolta camera, 35 millimeter, and I thought, okay, if I can't surf, I'm going to photograph it. The photographs were absolutely terrible. So, then I was hooked though. I'm like, well, why are they terrible? How do I make them better? So, I got hooked into photography. Fast forward till a little bit after 9/11, the military was looking at, well, I think the government in general was looking at, there's no way we're going to lose these wars militarily, but we could lose them by public opinion. So, I got force retrained into public relations, public affairs, they call it. Then I specifically went into combat camera and when I was wounded, received the Purple Heart, it was doing, it was in the capacity of combat camera. I was working around some Army Cav Scouts and Ford Observers. And then there was a Marsoc, a Marine Corps Special Operations Unit there, and then some Afghan Commandos. But it was all in the capacity of documenting the mission. I had a rifle, but my job there was to be the cameraman.
Very cool.
So, that's a long progression into what got me where up to the day I was wounded, into today.
Yes, sir. And I'd like to talk to you about that a little bit here later. But talk to us a little bit about what it meant to go into the military. We hear these stories of it was my sworn duty. And yes, that's very true. But personally, what was going on with you that decided, okay, I'm going to enlist?
Yeah.
What drove that?
Well, I'm not proud to say it. And I've heard controversy from college professors who proclaim this, but for me, it really was, there was, my grades in high school were terrible. There was no way I was going to college. I just wasn't, I didn't see myself destined for that. And I, so it was, it was opportunity. It was, it was a place where an enlisted person could get taught anything from basic rifleman skills to very advanced technical skills, depending on the branch and your scores when you enlist and stuff. So, it was kind of for me, a fresh slate. And then later I went back to college. But at that time, it was, I wouldn't say my only option, but if I was going to stay out of trouble, it was probably my only option.
Kind of, would you say that it helped make you, helped define you as a person when you're young and you go into the military and you're kind of all over the place? But did it bring you direction? Did it fulfill the purpose that you wanted military service to do for you?
It almost always did, but I always felt like I could do more. And I think it was like, it was like a feedback loop as I didn't, I don't know how patriotic I was when I enlisted. I mean, I loved this country. And I was proud of my, my father, my stepfather, my uncles, my grandparents, everyone's efforts in, in the Pacific and in Europe in World War II. That's about as far back as I know of history, but grandparents, Purple Heart recipients as well.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
That's amazing. Very amazing.
So, it's there. And I feel like though, when I was in, I would see people who were sacrificing more, you know? It was like they were giving everything to it, it felt like. And I always wanted, okay, how do I get into that unit? How do I get with these people? So, it was, I don't know. So, to answer your question, not quite, but I always, it just pushed me farther and farther and farther. And then when I got this unique privilege to tell the stories of some of these men and women, I wasn't really happy about the force retrain, but soon as I wrapped my head around what I would be doing, oh, my gosh, it was an incredible opportunity.
Right. A job worth doing is a job worth doing well.
Yes, sir.
Kind of thing. Let's talk a little bit about the day that you received the incident that led up to your Purple Heart.
Okay.
Just talk to me and let's.
Okay. So, we were in a valley called Balimargab in Baghd East Province in northwest Afghanistan. There was, main way the Taliban was funding their war against us was, was drug export. So, we had closed down over the course of several years, mostly Marines and British Army had choked off their drug exfil routes through the south, through Helmand and down that way. So, they were coming across the Iranian border in like Farah and Harat Province. And we had all but closed that off. So, they had one route really up into Turkmenistan to export their, their opium. So, they weren't going to let that valley go easy, you know? So, we had, we had a fight ahead of us. And the valley was in a really long, narrow, actually, it looked like the Outer Banks. It was just a very long, narrow stretch with mountains on both sides, mined for going back to before Russia. And it was like a very volatile, very dangerous valley. They started calling it the Valley of Death. But we had seized control over about, I would say 60% of the valley. But up the north, they called it, well, in the south, it was called Hell's Gate. And that was something that was very contested for a while, but we had secured that. But up in the north, leading up to the Turkmenistan border, the Taliban had just assumed a massive amount of people. And we knew that, but we weren't sure exactly how many. So, on that day, there was a couple of operations going on that I don't think, probably I should talk about what the Marsoc's mission was there. But the scouts, the Cav mission was to do a key leader engagement. And it was really to meet with the elders in this village and provoke them and see what the response would be. I don't mean that we, as Americans, go around provoking it, but we knew these were Taliban. We knew those were bad guys. And so, it was kind of, so we, we set up outside this village. And we took an old set of dilapidated ruins, you know? So, some of the walls were about maybe a foot high, some of them were about four foot high. And it was broke up into three rooms, this whole house. So, we set that up as our forward, our observation post anyway. And we were, they figured out we were there at some point over that night. And the next morning, we went to, well, we sent our, I was part of a group of four that went through the night before with a bomb dog. And we hadn't sniffed out any booby traps or anything like that. So, the next morning, we went through and then the dog Valdo was alerted to one. So, they had put something that we missed, or I don't think he would have missed it the night before. So, they had put it there that morning, which kind of diverted us, which felt like, okay, this isn't good. But we, we had to meet, their lieutenant had to meet with this elder. So, we were there and it was all, I don't know, you could see when, well, you're, you're in politics. You know when a meeting's going well, then you know when it's going not well. Well, this was like they were spitting. There was a behavior that among Afghan men are very disrespectful. They wouldn't do it unless, you know? So, it was going very, very, very not well. And then I could see on the rooftops of these buildings, they were starting to like pass up PKMs, Russian machine guns and stuff. So, bring that to the lieutenant's attention. We got to go. We couldn't make it back that way. So, we had to go across this field that we hadn't swept for mines or anything. But as we're getting across this field, we just start taking a massive amount of fire from the back. And I think there was like five of us there. But we got across this field, got back into the ruins. And then it's, we're just, you know, fire back and forth. Then it lights up, kicks off again, lets up. This went on for several hours. We were running pretty low on ammunition. And we couldn't get, and also, we had some wounded already at that time. But we couldn't get any, you know, air drops or any ammo drops or QRF out to us yet because the terrain as it was, there was no way to get to us.
Very dicey situation across the board.
Very dicey. Oh, yeah. Yeah. And intel was now telling us from air that there was like 100 to 125 of them. There was 11 of us. And so, they started hitting our position back to back with RPGs. And the room I was in was, as I looked at them from the far left, but I, I had moved out of that room a few times for some other close, close encounters when Taliban had, you know, snuck up on our position at one point and different things. But at the time when these RPGs were coming, that's where I was. And they had hit like where the mud ruin was, like with an RPG right there. And that just crumbled. And there was the dog Valdo, its handler, a guy named Petty Officer Ryan Lee, Army Sergeant Jeff Shepherd, Army PFC Ben Bradley, and myself were in that room. And so, it was at this point, like a lot of spraying and praying really, because there was just RPGs like hitting. There was no way to get out. It was pretty clear that they were dialed onto our position now. That's kind of how RPG, you know, targeting works once you're dialed on. So, we knew we had to get out of there. And we're grabbing our stuff, anything that we couldn't leave behind. And we're about to move when an RPG comes in and it like whizzes over my shoulder.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Like I had a beard going and it singed it. It was so close. If I was tall as like the average man, I would have taken it to the chest. So, lucky I was short. But anyway, it went over my shoulder and hit in the ground behind me. And when it exploded, unfortunately, Valdo took a lot of that, the dog. But his handler was wounded, actually everyone, everyone in the room was.
Sure. Oh, my gosh. Yeah.
Yeah. I kind of got blasted off my feet forward and I kind of lost consciousness for a moment. And then I could hear, when I came to, like my vision was, because kind of coming back. And I could hear Shepherd, Jeff screaming, you know, medic, god, we need a medic. Sorry for the language, but that's a direct quote. And I could hear chaos. So, I knew we were all, well, I wasn't sure we were all alive, but I knew I was alive. I knew Jeff was alive. I'm pretty much laying on top of Ben. I think he's alive. My other combat camera buddy, John Pearl, was, was on the video in the next room. He was coming to help us through. So, I was wondering if he was alive. I couldn't see there was so much smoke and dust. But I thought maybe Valdo and Ryan Lee back there, there was no way they survived it, you know? It was, but they both did, which was incredible.
Amazing. Thank goodness.
Yeah. And then we had a, I don't know, four more hours of fighting. And then we had to fight our way into the canal. And they were in the canal too. And it was, you know, we had to, and then carry Valdo, he was just, he survived too. But, but he, he was really blown a bad. But, and then, you know, we had like another four hours of fight. Then once we got back to the combat outpost, we could get some helicopters in there to medevac Valdo and Jeff and some of the more seriously wounded. But then we had to take the fight back or we would be seen. It would be a huge moral victory for them. And that would just, you know, that seems just how they recruit. So, there's no way we could have lost. We couldn't. So, we regrouped, got, they, they went back out when I was in the aid station, actually. I was being patched up and I came out and the vehicle, they had vehicles now. We were all in foot before. They were rolling out. And I was kind of angry because I wanted to be on there. And there was an Afghan National Army. They rode around in the ANA in these little like Toyota trucks with a 50 cal in the back. It's kind of cool. But they weren't armored or anything. And they were heading out. And I jumped in the back of their truck. And the Americans don't normally do that. They're like, what's, what's going on? Like just go, go. And then we were heading up and they got some call because there was like a lot of RPGs coming at our vehicles up there. And without armor, they got called back. So, I was bummed. So, I didn't get to go out on the reattack.
But you took the fight right back to them despite the condition that you were in.
Yep.
The other guys, I mean, you know, thank goodness.
Heroes. Those guys are heroes.
It's difficult for, I think, regular people who have not experienced anything like that to even comprehend, you know? You are a nanosecond from being a statistic.
Oh, yeah.
And if you would, what's, just can you convey some of the mental aspect? Are you in survival mode? Are you, how do you deal with it? I guess you have to push the emotions to the side. But where, where did you draw the mental strength to deal with the situation you were in? I mean, it was a fight with.
Well, yeah, it's, 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 you look around and, and all of these guys, their life is as valuable, or some of them are, are younger and what I perceived is more intelligent and have more to give to the world. So, are more valuable than mine. Like, and I don't know if this is just me, or if it's, however, airmen and sailors have felt when they're working directly with the Army or the Marine Corps. But there's an extra element of you feel like you always have to prove yourself a little bit extra. And I'm not, you know, that might just be me. And I'm not sure if this is a statistic or not. But for me, it was a lot of that too. I didn't want to ever be a burden on anyone else, you know? So, when I was wounded, it was a little bit like, I was thinking, oh, crap, like how am I gonna, I can't, I can't have someone carrying me.
Yeah. I don't want to let anybody down. You know, hearing you explain this just absolutely marvelous, amazing story that, you know, you guys depended on each other. It was not necessarily you, but it was the group. You were all for one and one for all, so to speak. Not to just to borrow something from the Three Musketeers kind of thing. But the fact that you have the strength of others to draw on, that, can you jump into that for a little bit? I mean, you guys, you still know these guys' names.
Yeah.
And you knew the dog. But it's, it's the, what the dog, all these technical things that you, you're, that you were trained for. And when the training kicks in. But just talk a little bit if you would. And Lauren, we're going to jump right over to you. Just, this is such a fascinating story that, but talk to a little bit about your group there. You said there were four, there were five. The other camera guy, you were working with a lot. But had you, had you been involved with these guys before? Was this a standing group? You knew these guys, Bradley and Shepherd and?
Actually, there was two platoons of these scouts, one in the north part of the valley, the other in the south. I knew the ones in the south very, very well. This, I had been working with these guys maybe a week when this, maybe, maybe a week when this happened. So, it was, but I knew of them all from their brothers down south, you know? I would hear about, we would hear what was going on on the other side of the valley. We were just geographically displaced and not in a position to help. In the center of the valley, there was a forward operating base that was run mostly by Italians. And there was, that's where Marsoc was. And that's where our troop, which is like a company and a Cav unit was. So, the command and stuff were, were there. And, but there was no like air support. It was not like, it was just a small base. So, getting air support was always a challenge up there. And because of that, I don't want to disparage any NATO ally, but they had different reasons to be in the war than we did, I think. And they committed their efforts in different ways. I'll just leave it at that. So, sometimes it felt like we were on our own out there.
Absolutely. Again, fascinating just aspects of this story, this, this conversation that we're having. I don't think people, I mean, I, and I was probably guilty of this as anybody, but you're not in an area with a bunch of palm trees. There's not a Dollar General half a mile down the road. There's, all it is, is rocks and dirt. Can you just kind of explain the terrain a little bit? I mean, is, it's kind of like being on the moon with mountains, I guess.
Well, yeah, in the south, it definitely was. Up there, it was very rugged, rocky. Kind of like the Rocky Mountains without the beautiful trees. And you have the rivers and stuff, but there wasn't many trees up on the tops of the mountains there were. But it was really rocky, boulderous terrain with one river that ran through the center. So, they had dug canals. But this particular valley is interesting that they've never had a power grid. It's not that they were once, like Kabul was once a civilized society before the rise of the Taliban. But this place had never been conquered. And there was four different languages spoken there. They, they were at war with each other constantly. They didn't even know they were in Afghanistan, as we would come to learn for a lot of the people. They never had a school. Our interest in that valley started when the Spanish, a Spanish Provincial Reconstruction Team in like 2008 or something went to build a school that the Taliban blew up like a week after they were done. So, some of our 82nd guys had to go help bail out the Spanish. And then two of the paratroopers, 82nd guys got killed. And that snowball effect brought a lot of attention on that valley. But that was, I think, in 2007 or eight.
That's probably a reason why that area is about as primitive as there is on the earth. I mean, you, it's not a place you go to that you, unless you're, I think of the Bedouin people on the deserts and stuff, kind of very similar. It's, it's not a place people aspire to move to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kevin, this is fantastic. And thank you for that. And we'll get back to some of this. Lauren, let's, let's talk a little bit about your background.
So, I'm an Army brat. My dad was in the Army my whole life. And so, I was born in Savannah, Georgia. But at the age of one, moved over to Schafenborg, Germany, where I lived there until I was four. And then I lived at Great Lakes Naval Training Center. My dad was an Army recruiter up there, trying to get people. It's like, oh, you grew up around the Navy. Well, here, join the Army. So, then after that, I came to Fort Bragg, North Carolina, where I spent the majority of my time. And then I got admitted into East Carolina, where I'm a graduate of. And in that time, I became a cultural anthropologist. So, how you were explaining, like you can't exactly say that you're a full historian when you try to explain things because of the academic side behind that. You can get away with that in anthropology. By telling people's stories, that is straight up cultural anthropology and recording history. And so, that's what led to.
The Outer Banks is a great fit for you.
Yes. I came out here, I was part of ECU's first group of students to study over at CSI back in 2020 is when it first happened. So, I was here when COVID hit the first time.
Oh, my gosh.
And I got kicked off the island. I didn't have a driver's license at the time. So, I had a letter from the sheriff that allowed me to come back. And so, for some reason, I just kept coming back. There's something magical about here. And.
Well, then, how, how did Kevin and Lauren, what started this?
So, back when Wabi Sabi was still open, I rolled sushi there for a period of time. And it was one Thursday night trivia where we had brushed wings a couple of times. We'd known of each other. But then when we were both single, he came up and wrote his phone number on my trivia card and said, text or call me, and walked away. And then we were on a date two days later and have been separable four years, four years now.
Wow. That is just absolutely fantastic. Okay. Great. Thank you, Lauren. So, here we are. We've got this van. That's quite a story there. It's not like you went out and bought something that's straight off the lot. Talk, talk a little bit about what, about this, I don't want to call it a project. That's probably not the word. It really is a labor. It's a labor of love. It's something, it's a way for you to give back to, to what you were doing. It has obviously your military background. And in your background as an Army brat, I'm a Army brat as well. But what, what precipitated this? All right. And we're going to go get a van. We're going to bring Sonny along. We're young, you know? What's going on here?
Shall I?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. So, we were at an event in Dayton, Ohio, specifically for Purple Heart recipients and Gold Star families. There's also some first responders and things. But the charter of the nonprofit that does it, Blue Skies for Good Guys and Gals, that's what they, that's their audiences, Gold Star families and Purple Heart recipients. So, it's this really cool event they have up in Dayton every year that I've been a part of for, for a long time now.
Love Dayton.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, very, very close connections to here, obviously. And yeah, a good friend of mine, former Ranger runs it. And his brother owns a skydiving team up there, which is the largest in the country, Fast Trax. So, they put on this event every year. And I hadn't been in several years because I live in paradise now and I, it's just hard to leave. And, but I thought Lauren needs to meet some of these people that are like another side of my family, right? So, we went up just to, well, we wanted to go up just to participate, but we were behind the power curve. But like, as I said, my, my buddy owns it. So, a little bit of nepotism. He's like, well, pitch me why, what we can employ you to do while you're here. And then maybe it'll work. I'm like, well, we can, so we had this great idea. We had like, we see people spray painting when we go like, especially like in Europe, like street artists and stuff. And we know there's therapy in art. So, we had this idea, what if we get like a tent that has heavy ventilation and we let people Bluetooth through their own music and go in there? And whether that's throwing paint at a canvas or spray painting, and we had the, you know, things and all for them to wear, the PPE. But what if we just let people go in this tent and express themselves art as in the evenings while they're sitting around the campfire? So, that's what we did. And it was just a complete success. And we were thinking like, and by the way, we had just bought the van, thinking we weren't sure what we were going to do with the next chapter of our life. And we were living out of the van and it was pretty uncomfortable. It was like we were sweating every night and stuff when everyone else was in ECU. But we thought this kind of was part of the experience. And we were seeing like happiness, or at least, I don't know, trauma processing happening in these veterans and these children.
There's a common theme here, therapy. And yes.
Yeah. So, we're like, we gotta do something more. And then Lauren wanted to bring a bit of that, what we saw in Dayton, the respect for, for the veterans here. So, she proclaimed Roanoke Island as the first Purple Heart Island, which was as you know.
Yeah, very cool.
Yeah. So, then she's like, well, we gotta do, what about so and so Illinois or so and so Utah? I don't know. We've got to tell these stories. And we thought, well, why don't we start at home and then like convert that stupid van we bought, which has 310,000 miles on it? And let's just ride it and drive until it dies.
Bad tires.
Yeah. It tells us it's in bad shape.
Outer Banks limo.
Yeah. Yeah. But let's just drive it till it's dead. And let's go to all the lower 48, anywhere we can drive to and tell the story of at least two Purple Heart recipients or Gold Star families in each state. So, now we have this directory of Purple Heart recipients. And we're trying to figure out our route around the country. But we want to just do it until we create a book that could be like, you know, what do you call it? Like a?
Coffee table size and style.
Yeah. And, and document these stories and help connect that Purple Heart Trail that we're now the first, you know, island.
First declared island.
So, I think there's something there. And it's mostly Lauren's idea, but she's, she has all the good ideas. I just hope.
Lauren, let's, why don't you weigh in? That, that does, being somebody with creative background and thinks of the, of the beauty and the design of things. So, you've been over by the courthouse. You've seen that. What kind of click in, on this Purple Heart Island?
Well, while we were up in Ohio, I had heard the stories of a couple of people, like when Dayton was declared a Purple Heart city and the efforts that they were able to include after it was named that and just the attention brought to it. So, I snooped around the internet, trying to figure out if there were any other declared Purple Heart Islands. And I couldn't find any. There were Purple Heart counties, towns, Virginia's a Purple Heart state. You see the sign as soon as you cross the border. But I was like, hmm, Roanoke Island has been the first in the Outer Banks and in general has been the first for so many things. Why not become the first island? And so, I got in contact with the Purple Heart Trail Coordinator. And he approved my proclamation before I brought it before the commissioners. And yeah, they were just waiting on the signature. And then after we got that from you guys, they're in the process of making the signs now.
Fantastic. You know, they, they say the Outer Banks, I mean, everybody's here because they want to be here. And I guess we kind of fancy ourselves as pirates, even though there are a lot of local families that are descended from some pretty nefarious characters. And you guys are obviously fitting into that, that same mold. Talk to us a little bit about some of the, you're looking, out looking for Purple Heart recipients in this area. But you know, there's so many interesting people. We're talking about Mr. Beasley over in Collington and others. Are you finding what you need here before you really get out?
Well, just on Wednesday this week, we had our first Purple Heart interview with Mr. Thomas Beasley, I mean, Thomas Higgins, sorry. And his story was absolutely fantastic. So, I think in addition to recording our Purple Heart stories, that'll be the focus of our coffee table style book. But we're going to be accumulating interviews and stories from people. But we're gonna be accumulating interviews and stories from people along the way and we're gonna be storing them away. Not sure how yet we're going to involve them, but just as long as people are willing to tell their stories, we'll be happy to listen and record them. Especially as it pertains to our veterans who have been combat, who have had combat experience. Because the real stories are not just this battle happened here, this happened here and the basics of history. The true lessons of war are what's between the lines. And it's the experiences and that's what we need to record, or else history is doomed to repeat itself.
One hundred stories, sounds like a very ambitious goal. But each one of those, as you embark on this, on this amazing journey, the, each one is specific, each one is very cool. There's not gonna be any weak stories. Uh, you got quite a tiger by the tail here and wish you well. I thank you for your service, not just uh, on the Veterans Advisory Council, but just being an area that understands, the Outer Banks, that understands military service, uh, the commitment, the, the drain, the emotional drain, uh, what it does to families. I mean, you've, you've been all over the place. Uh, you know, you, about the time you make new friends, you're gonna have to go make some other friends. So thank you for that. I mean, it's uh, and everybody you talk to is, is going to say, I, I would trust that the local population here is gonna be very grateful for uh, this project here. What, what do you see? Uh, how can, how can people help you? Is it a function of money? I mean, nothing, nothing comes cheap.
Yeah, um, it definitely, um, we have a website, um, and um, you could find it by, people can find it by Googling Van of Valor, but.
VanofValor.com.
Yes, sir. And um, we're trying to um, obviously fundraise for this event.
Sure.
We're selling what we can, uh, what we could liquidate to help, to help fund as much of it we can. But travel, even if we're living in a van, there's always um, you know, fees you have to pay in the, in the parks and stuff, anywhere between ten and thirty bucks a night. So you're, and then, you know, gas and just the whole enchilada, it'll be quite expensive. So we're looking for anyone who's willing to help. And also we're open to sponsorship if someone wants to stick a big magnet on the side of the van and, and, and help us along the way. But I think, I think mostly it's, it's gonna grow traction on its own, unlike our tires. No pun intended, but um, I think it's like, what we're seeing here is tremendous and we've just started. And I imagine if, if, if the van is rolling on to, let's just say, South Carolina next, well, it'll be another part of the state. And then, say, South Carolina, Virginia, Tennessee, I'm not sure which way we're gonna go next, but wherever we are next, as that starts to build momentum, I think social media and stuff, people will be interested. And we'll just continue to evolve an email blast list for those who are not on social media and just keep people updated on what we're doing. And I think, um, I think, I think the story will end up telling itself. We'll, we'll do the hard work and we'll, you know, sweat in the van with Sunny for a year. But um, if, if we can do it in a year, I, I hope we can. I think we can. But our intent is just to keep going until the van dies or we're out of money and, or we're done. And that's the ultimate goal.
You have embraced the Outer Banks. I mean, you could have embraced anywhere. I know Fayetteville's not that far for you, Lauren. And you, you, you were a surf dude growing up. I mean, that's the culture that's here, you know? Having been down in Hatteras all these years, but it's not just Hatteras. I mean, people, when Christmas is over with, nothing's open because they're all in Costa Rica, they're all in Nicaragua, all chasing. So the area obviously attracted you too.
Yeah.
And uh, probably answered my own question there, but anything you want to say about uh, just, have, are you glad that you did this year?
Yeah, and I will say, um, that before I moved here, when I did, like, everyone's gonna do research. Of course, crime's really low and, and, and opportunity, there's plenty of opportunity. But one thing I noticed that could be intimidating to people was that there is a stiff divide between who's local and who's not. But what struck me is even the families, people we meet who have been here for generations are so open and welcoming to us and invite us in and um, some of the warmest people I've met anywhere. So um, if, if people are listening and you're not from here, don't believe what you read online because these are some of the nicest people I've ever encountered. Sorry, you are some of the nicest people I ever encountered. I think Outer Banks people are amazing.
Yes, uh, the, the area changes so much. It's such a dynamic, nothing stays static here, certainly not the geology. But you know, you, that's a very, very apt description of, it's just a big stew. It's just a big stew of people who, who are here for different reasons. But everybody who's here wants to be here. Yeah. Kevin, appreciate you, man.
Thank you, sir.
Lauren, great story, great story.